Stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wait a minute.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that you've given us this beautiful fall day, the good turnout that we have here tonight. And we ask that you be with us here in the city as we grow and go through hurdles, help it to be a good time for everyone, and help the City of Canton to just be on top of all the things that we should be. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. You may have to bear with us a little bit because we are learning these new quarters. This is our first meeting in this facility. But I think it's going to work out even much better than our last facility as far as sound goes and so forth. So we do appreciate you being here, and we've got some new electronics up here as well. So bear with me because I'll be pushing a few buttons as people want to speak and as they complete their discussion. So anyway, let's get moving along. We have a recognition today of some folks that we're very proud of, that have been with our city for quite some time and have provided a service to our city that is just unbelievable and done such a great job for us. And I'm going to let Mr. Peppers begin this process.
Thank you very much. The city has had a relationship for a number of years with our friends at the Cherokee County Training Center. And as part of that relationship, we have a special group of employees that we have that come and work with us every day and help keep our facilities clean. They always bring a smile to every task that they do at City Hall, the Police Department, Public Works Facilities, and we really just appreciate their service. We more appreciate the relationship that we have with them personally. I don't think you can find a staff member in the city that doesn't know our cleaning crew by name. There's always a hug, a handshake, a high five, sometimes a laugh. Sometimes we just have to cut up with each other a little bit. But we wanted to recognize them tonight because they have been with us for a period of years. And so what we've done, we have a plaque for you, we've got a new polo shirt for you, a new lunchbox for you, and we've got a pin for your service. And so the first one I want to recognize is Sharon. Sharon has been with us for five years, starting October. Next up, is Alan with us tonight? Alan Ellard has been with us for 15 years. He's not with us yet, but we will hold on to his staff for him. All right. Jason Hillhouse has been with us for 15 years. And then the last is Shane Loggins. Shane has been with us for 15 years also. I'm going to tell a little story on Shane real quick. Shane was very quick to let me know when I first started with the city that he had been with the city for 13 years. And I said, "That's a long time." And he said, "That's a lot longer than you." And I let him know quickly that the tenure for city manager's not been very long. I might need to join the cleaning crew. They have a longer tenure. But we really appreciate the hard work of these individuals. They come with such a smile all the time and are very helpful to us. Next week, we will say goodbye to Shane. He's going to be moving off. And so we're going to miss seeing him every day. But we really do appreciate the hard work that they put in for us. And if it's okay, I would like to get them up on the stage and let's get a group picture with the elected officials and this great group of people. All right?
Okay. Next item, we have a couple, maybe three proclamations that we've been asked to provide. And the first one is recognizing and presenting proclamation with the Red Ribbon Week. And I will read this. Is Rebecca Thomas here? She's not here. Okay. She was going to receive it. So I will just read it, and we won't do any presentation then. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Carmenera -- that's pretty close. Nobody knew the difference, I guess. -- a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and represents the belief that one person can make a difference. Whereas, Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas, October 23 through the 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I, Gene Hobgood, Mayor of the City of Canton, hereby proclaim October 23 through the 31st, 2018 as Red Ribbon Week in Canton, Georgia, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. The next item we have is the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Brandon Roberts was going to be here, but a conflict came up and he couldn't be here. But he wanted to make sure that we read this proclamation as well, which has been really an annual event for quite a few years since I've been here, for sure. Whereas, since 1954, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes has been challenging coaches and athletes on the professional college, high school, junior high, youth and youth levels to use the powerful medium of athletics for Christian fellowship. And whereas, FCA is the largest Christian sports organization in America and focuses on several local communities by equipping, empowering, and encouraging people to positively impact the world through the example of Christ. And whereas, the four main values taught by FCA are integrity, service, teamwork, and excellence. And whereas, on October 10, 2018, parents, students, and coaches will come together on their local high school athletic fields for an event called Fields of Faith, presenting an opportunity for students to share their testimonies with one another. Fields of Faith was started in 2002 in Oklahoma and has grown to become a nationwide FCA ministry. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Canton do hereby designate Wednesday, October 10, 2018, as Fellowship of Christian Athletes Day in Canton, Georgia, on the occasion of their ninth annual Fields of Faith event. And one last proclamation we have is the Extra Mile Day. And sometimes we all need to, you know, go that extra mile. Whereas, the City of Canton, Georgia, is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. Whereas, the City of Canton, Georgia, is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas, the City of Canton, Georgia, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas, the City of Canton, Georgia, acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America, to create 550 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2018. Now therefore, I, Gene Hobgood, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2018, to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. I believe the next item, we have a presentation by Mr. Hatabian and our engineering firm regarding the capital improvements projects for sanitary sewer system.
Right. As part of the master plan, you know, Black and Beach has come up with the capital improvement plans for the projects for the sanitary sewer system. They're going to give you a little presentation of what they've come up with and what they recommend. If you remember, I think it was last month, they did the water system presentation. So they'll follow up with the wastewater now, and I'll turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Simpson, and I work with Black and Beach. And it's been my privilege to work with Dave, other city staff, and your operational partner in going through a comprehensive evaluation of the wastewater system to make sure that your assets are in good condition and that you have the capacity now and into the future to serve your citizens. So what I'd like to do tonight is briefly talk about the work that we've done, and then the recommendations, more importantly, the recommendations that came out of the work that we did. As you know, you have great coverage of your sewer system within the service area. You have a one wastewater treatment plant. You actually have 33 city-owned pump stations, 110 miles of gravity sewer in the city, and 17 miles of force main. So a lot of people are surprised when you add up the numbers about actually the assets the city has in terms of the system. One other thing that's of note is the number of pump stations. For a system of this size, 33 pump stations is quite a few. And so that plays a part in some of the recommendations that we'll cover in a moment. We've talked before about the water projections. Because of the projected growth in the city, the wastewater projections follow a similar trend. And so the projection is that the wastewater that's generated in the city and needs to be treated may approach the current capacity of the existing wastewater plant by in the 2024 to 2025 range. So of course, that plays a part in system recommendations moving forward. As we got started on the evaluation, we did a number of things. One was, due to the number of pump stations, we actually did a condition assessment of your 10 largest pump stations to look at the condition of those critical facilities. We also looked at all of the gravity collection system and the pump systems that the city has. This is a schematic, and all the little triangles that you see on the schematic are pump stations that are connected via force main to gravity parts of the system that are in green with the little round manholes, if you will. One of the things that you'll note, if you looked at this schematic for a little while, is the number of pump stations that feed into the Colwell Pump Station and the number of pump stations that feed into Harmon Field. And that plays a part in the recommendations when we get to that. So all of the evaluations we did, we looked at pipe capacity, we looked at force main capacity in terms of your level of service goals, meeting appropriate velocities, being able to pump the required flow and still have firm capacity in your pump station. So all sorts of level of service recommendations along those lines. What came out of that was a series of recommendations for improvements that will be needed. And if you remember, the timeframe here is through 2040. And we've separated those into a number of areas. So we have treatment. And as you know, the existing treatment plant, you're currently in the process of looking at expanding that. Pump stations, you have 33 pump stations, and really, there's recommendations for two of those that need to be expanded, as well as some minor continuation of programs that are ongoing, like SCADA improvements and reliability. And then there are some sections of piping on the gravity system side. There are some areas of the system that are subject to infiltration and inflow that needs to be addressed. And there are some other minor recommendations as well about completing the system inventory and mapping and doing some additional flow monitoring. This is a map of the CIP projects that have been identified. You'll see that most of them are in the core area of the city nearest to the treatment plant. And if you think about it, that makes sense because the flow from around the service area actually flows together. So you would expect that as the flows go up, the core facilities are the ones that need to be improved. And I'm going to step through each of these just very briefly to make sure that you're clear on the different components. So the first is your existing water pollution control facility. To meet the treatment capacity needs that are projected through 2040, you have an expansion of your current plant that's currently under design. And you're looking to upgrade that plant from four MGD capacity to six MGD capacity. So that should, according to the projections, that should satisfy the city's needs through 2040. The Harmon Field Pump Station is one on the east side of the city that needs to be expanded. As you know, this station serves the downtown area, and it also serves the new Northside Hospital. So the Northside Hospital used to discharge into the portion of the system that fed the Colwell Pump Station, now feeds into the portion of the system that is served by Harmon Field. And so between the reassignment of where flows come into the system and the growth in various areas, this is one of those pump stations that needs to be upgraded. And we've outlined, we looked at a path to doing that by adding a third pump and replacing the two existing pumps. There's a photo of the existing station and gives you an idea on the aerial photo of its location. Similarly, the Colwell Pump Station serves a large area of the service area. And it's currently a three-pump system, and we are looking to upgrade the capacity of that station. The recommendation, due to the size of the increase, is to replace the three existing pumps that you have. And as with any pump station improvement, associated with the pumps, you also have piping, valves, those sorts of things that need to be replaced as well inside the station. So there's a picture of the existing pump station, again, an aerial view, kind of shows its location in relation to the wastewater treatment plant. In terms of the pipeline, the good news is, out of those 110 miles of gravity pipeline, there were not that many segments that need to be upgraded. But there is a large collection system component that's just upstream of the Colwell Pump Station that does need to be replaced. It's along the Etowah River there. We actually sized that out as needing to be a 30-inch gravity main. There's another section of piping that's near the Etowah Rock Pump Station discharge. That's a little bit smaller upgrade need, but we're looking at a need to replace 8-inch pipe with 12-inch pipe in that location. And then, as I mentioned, some of the areas of the downtown system, you had a separate sanitary sewer evaluation survey that generated some recommendations for specific improvements to address infiltration and inflow. These are some aerial photos that show the relation of those pipeline projects. You'll note that the 30-inch one is the gravity sewer section that feeds Colwell Pump Station, which was one of our recommendations for expanding. So it gives you an idea of where those are. And so to summarize, and we're talking here about the major projects that are included in the CIP, just to summarize, the wastewater plant, the two pump stations, and then the 30-inch, and then the 12-inch gravity sewer replacements. Gives you an idea of the magnitude of the CIP going forward. So with that, I know I've moved through pretty quickly. Hope that's given you a good overall summary of some of the work that we did and recommendations, and happy to address any questions.
Mr. Hestes?
Wait a minute.
Back to which?
Page two, right in the beginning, the diagram that showed the projections
Okay.
of the MGD. So if you look at the trend over the last 10 years, the trend line appears to really accelerate. Help me understand what's causing that. I don't recall that being as dramatic, maybe before with the water, because I remember we had the water trend chart. But help the layman understand, like, what is included in that projection there?
Okay. So included in that is the current pace of new development within the city. I think you regularly hear from Mr. Patton, and we coordinated when we were doing the projections, of developable land, what parcels, and what kinds of development were proposed within the service area. And then it also includes some areas of additional service area. The north part of the city toward the reservoir, that area. So it's a combination of increased growth and development within the current service area, and then some serving some areas that are currently not very developed.
And when you say, so for example, we've got a lot of, in the master plans and within the communities, there's a lot of undeveloped plots and pods that are projected to come on at some point. And maybe this is
Right.
not a question for you. But so that would be included in that projection with some estimate of we think it's going to come online at this time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And what's also taken into account there is actually conservation. You know, we're looking to the future with new development, using less water on a per fixture kind of basis. So that's included in that, in those figures as well. And one other thing, as we're continuing to talk, I think of other things. Northside has pretty significant growth plans in terms of expanding the number of beds and the associated medical facilities. And so again, that's included in this projection as well.
Mr. Grant? So you mentioned the service areas. You said it included current service areas and I believe you said future service areas. So the service area you're referring to is future. Is that outside our current service area?
No.
Okay. It's just, it's inside the current
Correct.
service area.
More on the north side. So you see, in green here is the existing facilities. And you'll see toward the north part around the reservoir, there's less green, if you will. And that area is already within your current service area. It's just, there's not development there that would need those services.
I just want to confirm that, because I know we had that discussion.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussions about service area. Absolutely.
Thank you for confirming that.
There's no way, I suppose, that you could take into consideration the projections on what the attitude of the local governing authority might be with regard to various types of developments, or the attitude toward annexations or things like that. It might be extremely aggressive, or it might be very, very conservative. So that's something that you really can't consider, right?
You're exactly right. And so when we talk about those projections and doing projections out through 2040, obviously, our projections will be less accurate the farther out we go. So that boils back to the recommendation that you regularly update, you know, to keep track and update these projections on a forward-going basis.
Would those projections assume that the governing authority would move forward at a reasonable rate of approving developments as they came in? Or, I mean, you know, if all of a sudden they said, you know, we want to stop, we want to put a stop to some of this stuff, and the council put a stop to it, then that would certainly throw off these projections down the road, right?
That's correct.
Or if they wanted to be very aggressive toward development, that could even get worse. Okay.
Yep.
See, anyone else? Okay. Mr. Hatabian, you have anything? Okay. One other question here. Ms. Wilson?
Well, I don't have a question. I just want to react to what you've given us. Forty, almost $45 million in six years for these projections to be completed, or at least to be started. That is a very sobering thought for all of us on council, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I think we've all been looking forward to hearing from you. I don't know if we're looking forward to this kind of report or not. But it is very sobering to think that, I'm sure in six years, it'll be up to 50 million. So that's a lot to be thinking about. Thank you.
Mr. Patton, you got some?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, council members, if you'll recall in the work sessions that City Council did a hole with Black and Beach and discussed these projections and things of that nature, please remember that residential component projections were based on some five-year averages and utilized some ARC projection numbers. And in actuality, over the last couple of years, the number of permits that the city has issued has been above that average that was used in those projections.
Okay. Mr. Peppers?
I was just going to note that one of the things we've tried to do along the way when looking at projects like this is to think about, you know, how we, if we do move forward with them, how forward with them, how we can take advantage of some of those projects. And so, for instance, the 30-inch line that we talked about, which is on the west side of the Edoa River, one of the conversations that at least Mr. Hatavian and I had was, wouldn't this be great if we do that project to put the trail in at the same time along with that project? You know, almost to take the same philosophy that they used down in Columbus, which was, take a project that you have to do and figure out a way to make it more amenable to the public. And so that's one of the things that we'll be looking at with some of these projects, because almost all of the bigger projects are near our parks, are near recreation, and so we're going to have to think about how that, how that upgrade and change is going to conflict or become, become an improvement for those parks as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you for the information. It is quite sobering. I agree with Ms. Wilson, especially when you add in the water plant and so forth, another 30 million or whatever it was, it was something like that. So there's a lot of dollars out there that looks like may have to be spent in the next few, few short years, or at least will get started fairly soon. Okay. Consideration to approve the agenda, I would like to amend that by adding an executive session to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation. Is there any, are there any other changes that need to be made to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Got to push your button. Wait a minute. And we had a motion and a second. Hey, you're doing that too quick. Hang on a minute. Okay. Motion and a second to approve the agenda, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? Okay, all members voting for the motion. Okay. All right. Consideration to approve the minutes, City Council meeting, draft minutes from September the 20th, attachment 5A there you have. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, I'll entertain someone pushing their button and making a motion. Go ahead.
No. We got it. We had, was this for the minutes of this, what? No? Okay. Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a... You want to speak? Okay. Mr. Goodwin made the second. Man, this is hard, I tell you. This is tough. I believe Mr. Grant, you made the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin made the second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. All right. Our 10-minute public input, I would, would just like to say once again, with regard to our financials, we've got to do the financials first, which are the August financials, and Chief, CFO is here, Nathan Ingram, if there are any questions or any questions. This is for informational purposes only. We don't need any action. Okay? Okay. All right. 10-minute public input, I would like, like to say that, you know, under, under our 10-minute public input, what we, what we have here is, it's a monologue. We want, we want to hear from anyone who has a, something they would like to address the council during that period of time. It's not a dialogue where we don't engage or get back and forth at that time, but it does give the public the opportunity to come in and speak to the entire mayor and council at one time. So you don't necessarily have to, you know, go meet with one and go meet with another and so forth, but you can lay out whatever your interest is at that point. I will also say that regarding the zoning information, that we've, the public hearing has been held already, so we would not be receiving any comments from the public. You're welcome to email us again, and many, many, many people have, but we won't be receiving any public input on those issues at this time. There is some interest, and I think Ms. McGruder will address this later, about maybe expanding our opportunities in the future on, on public input regarding zonings and so forth. So with that, with that being said, we, we have about four people, look like. Mr. Harpers?
Hi. I'd like to speak about the potential changes to the, to ethics ordinance discussed at the last meeting. While I know the hearts of some on this council are in the right place, changing an ordinance and then hearing a complaint that was submitted well before the new rules were enacted is like asking the Canton police to offer tickets to people that were holding their cell phones before July, in their cars before July 1st. I don't think anyone thinks the current ordinance is perfect, but I wonder if some of you would rather not move forward with the current set of rules. As you know, there are those on this council that have personal biases against this issue. Attempting to sidestep other ethics complaints, complaints that call into question the impartiality and validity of these proceedings, won't make those complaints go away. Mr. Dyer, I believe you said last week, and I apologize if I misunderstood your meaning, you said that we can't ask for reasons why a member votes the way that they do, and that partiality is inherent in the council members. The city of Canton ordinances literally say, the members of its governing body, I'm sorry, the members of its governing authority be and give the appearance of being independent and impartial. And I'm not talking about partiality when it comes to doing what, you know, their constituents wants. This was one of the same quotes that the ethics investigation hearing used as justification to move forward with, to the full ethics committee a couple Mondays ago. And like I said, this is not the, like, that partial, impartiality is not what the constituents want. I'm talking about well-documented, public, personal, open-mic biases that make the validity of all of these ethics proceedings suspect. As one of your constituents, I'm asking that you face the entirety of this situation head-on with unbiased professionalism, such that no one can question any of its fairness. By attempting to change the rules while there are issues pending is unjust, unfair, and is ducking the harsh realities of our current situation and not what the voters sent, sent you here to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harpers. Appreciate it. Mr. Weaver?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. It should come as no surprise, remarks that I'm going to make this evening, as I have wrote each of you, and I have also emailed each member of council, in regards to a pending matter of new business on tonight's agenda regarding the four-and-a-half acre tract of land that was included in the 2016 Consolidated Fire Services Agreement that you entered into some two years ago with Cherokee County. It is my belief that the administration's recommendation to you on new business to consider amending that contract to grant easement to the school district, tract of land, or a separate tract of land next to Julius Bridge Road off of Georgia 372, is completely untenable and unpalatable, in my opinion. That's not what your voters, your constituents, your taxpayers, your entrepreneurs, your investors, and those that call Canton home, that's not what they were promised when you chose to consolidate your fire department with the counties. And therefore, I would respectfully request, again, on third occasion, to each of you to please reject that notion, and based on a large amount of debate that was had over the alcohol restaurant district ordinance, that you lay that matter on the table and postpone consideration of it indefinitely, as I alluded to in my letter. I implore you again, just think, you have one apartment complex that's being built on Reservoir Drive, you have another that's seeking a cup zoning amendment that's looking to be placed next to the Marie Archer Teasley Middle School facility there. You have single-family homes that's going to be at the first roundabout, past the county's offices there on the right, on the Bluff Technology Parkway corridor, in addition to residents and guests who visit the lake there now that it's been opened and Canton has granted public access to the beach. You seem like you would want a fire department there for public safety purposes, and to move away or move in an opposite direction would be a disservice not only to those of us who were here, including myself, when you voted on that matter, but it would also be a disservice to all of the new residents who are looking, or potential future residents who are looking to call Canton home also. So again, I respectfully request each of you to firmly reject such a notion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Riley Holland?
Hello. My name is Riley Holland, and I'm a senior at Cherokee High School. I am a co-founder and spokesperson for Students Demand Action for gun sense in Cherokee County. I'm here today because I want to introduce myself and my organization to each of you. Students Demand Action has chapters across the nation that seek to recognize the gun violence that is plaguing our communities as a whole, with 90 people dying in the United States due to gun violence every single day. Our group advocates for the responsible practice of the Second Amendment. This essentially means that we respect Americans' rights to own firearms, but we also acknowledge the immense responsibilities that come with handling firearms. Thus, our group advocates for laws that require background checks for both a criminal record and mental health history on all firearm sales. We also advocate for increased education on the responsible ownership, storage, and usage of firearms. As elections are coming up soon, our chapter's primary goals for our community right now are registering voters and encouraging people to look into their local candidates' policies on firearms. Thank you for giving me your time, and I look forward to opening a productive dialogue with each of you about gun sense in our community and in our nation.
Thank you. Roy Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am coming before you this evening to talk about workforce housing. We, this is a subject that we worked on as part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan redo. One of the issues that came up was how could we implement? How could we bring this to the city? Who would provide this? And it has been made aware to me that we have opportunities with the growth, and it was very interesting to actually be at a meeting where, and before I came up, we were talking about how much growth that we are expecting. Well, with that growth is going to have a lot of jobs, and those jobs are going to be taking care of the people, whether it be employees, teachers, custodians at our schools, new fire, new police, and all of the service workers that sort of fit in the workforce housing that I'm talking about. We are going to be, you are going to be asked to change how we have zoned property. You're going to be asked to have increases at every turn. Well, that becomes an opportunity. If you are giving the opportunity to developers to overbuild how we have zoned an area, then there might be able to be some sort of reciprocity, and the developers could offer the city to be able to be building workforce housing as part of a condition of getting this extra housing that they are asking for, or they could pay into a fee that would then, the city might be able to encourage another developer to build this housing. So there are several different ways, but when we're going to have examples of zonings that would allow six units per acre to be built at 16 units per acre, maybe we could have a one-for-one workforce housing built for every extra unit that is being done. Or maybe it's just some percentage of that. But it's, I just offer this as a possibility of one of the ways with which we finance, that we could address the issue, which is really move to a crisis thing, that we don't have any housing being built that satisfies that income level. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our 10-minute public input period, and we will move right into old business, and we have discussion of possible action on street acceptance for our streets in Laurel Canyon Pod 5. We've talked about these for a couple of different meetings, I think.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. Staff did receive coring, a report on the coring samples from the developer at about 11:00 a.m. this morning. The coring samples did meet the city's standards. There was one core sample that was a tenth of an inch less than the minimum standard, but we have a plus or minus tolerance of 12 hundredths, so it met the standard as well as the others that went over the thickness requirement.
Okay. All right. What's, what's your pleasure regarding this? If we can, do, does this need to be approved tonight? I know it's the third time, but it is a work session, but... It's up to the council, what you want to do? Apparently not. Okay. We will do that. Thank you. All right. The next item? But it does qualify, so I mean, you know, it's, it's
Yes, sir.
It's met all the standards. Okay. Under new business, discussion of street closure for Veterans Day Parade on November the 10th. Ms. Gold?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. As you know, any special event that requests a street closure has to come to council and be approved by council members. And on November 10th, the American Legion Post 45 is hoping to do their annual Veterans Day Parade in downtown Canton. It will follow the traditional parade route down West Main, East Main, and around, close to the elections office, and then back down North Street. They will be gathering at, I believe they gather down at Auto Zone at 12:30, and the parade starts at 1:30. The parade is also in conjunction with the Main Street Chili Cook-Off, that is, that day from 12 to 3:00. The street closure would take place from about 1:00 to maximum 2:30.
Okay. Any questions on that? That's what we've done every year, right? Basically?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Good. Hold on a minute. See if I'm, there you go.
I wanted to mention something for everyone to think about, we'll discuss it another time, but it's just, since it involved the American Legion, I thought it would be a good time to mention. I've had someone from the Legion approach me, and I've heard that there were some issues with Riverstone with our sign policy. We have traditionally, in the past, been kind of lenient with nonprofits, and apparently we are being a lot stricter. And I wonder if it's something you might consider for a nonprofit that's been doing things for years, being a little more lenient on their signage for, you know, advertising events. Like I say, this is not the time to discuss that. I just want to throw it out there, while I was thinking about it, for everybody to consider, and we can discuss it at a later time. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Peppers, do you want to speak?
I was, I was just going to say, we, we had this come up a little bit with the Fields of Faith event that's coming up, and basically what we've said to the nonprofits is that if you'll give us a list of the locations, and if you'll get with the property owner that, on that location to get their approval, we're good to go. But you can't put it on the right of way, and you got to get with the property owner. So, I mean, if, if council wants a different direction, we can, we can add that to the agenda for discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, discussion of variance on project, project construction hours for Batson Cook, construction for Northside Cherokee Medical Office Building Number Two. I believe Don Hosfeld is going to make that presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Don Hosfeld. I'm representing Batson Cook and Northside Hospital this evening to request the extending, the extending of the working hours under your current ordinance. And I thought, as I go through the process, our thought process, I had put together packets that would, that would lead you through my thought process. Mr. Mayor, would I be able to... I thought it easier, rather than just holding the boards up, you actually be able to see it in front of you. it in front of you as I discuss. Okay, thank you. On the first page there, you're looking at the master plan of Northside. It is the master plan we've been working off of, and as you see, the big T, that is where the hospital is. And as you migrate down towards the bottom, you'll see the brown building, which is the existing medical office buildings, one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand square feet. This gray structure here is the existing parking deck, and that's now been expanded out over to the service road. The building that is being, and we're pleased to be here to tell you that we're building another one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand square foot building that is, I believe, fully leased, and they think that it'll generate about another one-hundred-and-ten jobs to the project. That is in the light tan there. Something you might find interesting, the statistic, the hospital's grown and become, obviously, so popular, you've seen it, is that the daily visitation to that site averages between twelve-hundred and eighteen-hundred visits per day. That's how many people visit the site itself. So if you can imagine on that drawing, where you have the main parkway, that many people coming into the site, it's quite a busy, quite a busy location. The one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand square foot building, what we're going to be asking for is an extension of the time for our concrete pours. It's a limited time. I'll get to that in just a second. And also, for the pre-cast construction, all of the exterior of the skin is a pre-cast concrete structure that has to be put up with cranes, and I'll get to that in just one second. If you remember back when we first were building the hospital, before there was any traffic on the side or whatever, we had an adjacent subdivision where there were two or three people, one person we got to know intimately that was bothered by the noise, and we found out that that was unintended consequences of a lot of conservative thinking, to where we actually built, on this road, a series of speed bumps. They poured the concrete here, the cleanout for the concrete trucks were out here, so as they poured the concrete and emptied their concrete trucks, the booms had not been tied down, the big flumes. And as they would go back through the subdivision, go back through the project, they would hit those speed bumps, that boom would go metal against metal, and it would sound like a cannon going off. When that was brought to our attention, we immediately addressed that, took the speed bumps out, solved that issue, and we actually posted people out in the neighboring subdivision. And in your second page, you'll see is an aerial of the adjacent subdivision, and you'll see where the hospital is, everything that I just showed you, the hospital, the existing office building, the parking deck, and then this blank spot right here is where we're building the new hospital. We actually posted people out here in the streets at four AM and people down here during one of our pours, and I personally experienced, it was, I don't mean to be comical, but all you could hear was the crickets that were in the woods. So we solved that problem. So with this, it's a different issue than the pouring, it's pure public safety. And the next drawing that you see, I didn't blow this one up, but the next one that you will see is the GIS topo, and it actually shows where the construction pad is, and the closest home that will be to this construction is from the back door, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight feet. So there's a generous amount of distance between the backs of the homes to our construction. There's about a sixty-foot elevation change. It drops down thirty feet, and then it comes back up. When Batson Cook started doing the job, they have, something you may not know, they have a full-time safety person on staff that does nothing more than evaluate job sites to make sure that not only are the employees and their staff and the workers there safe, but also all those people that are visiting the site. So that is your next letter that you see there from Mr. Artzit from Batson Cook, describing the difficulties of constructing without having some extended hours, the difficulties and the interaction that will take place if we aren't given permission to work outside of those hours. The next drawing that you have is a drawing that they put together, which, if you'll look at the bottom of the page, that is the ambulance access, in red, or in pink, I guess, or orange. And the building that's actually being worked on is right here that is in white. The only access to that site is for the concrete trucks to be able to come down and gain access there. And to give you an idea, one of the pours is twenty-three trucks. So the request before you is going to be in the very next letter. It's a letter detailing specifically what our request is, and for the concrete pour, it is to start at four AM on Mondays through Fridays, and seven AM on Saturday, only from November first through mid-February. That'll be approximately thirteen pours, and it is to keep the twenty-three trucks per pour without coming into a interaction with the peak time of the hospital, which is the shift change and where most of the people come for their testing, which is seven AM in the morning. We're trying, we will have those pours completed by that time, and the trucks will be out of there. Also, for county and city streets, the trucks coming from the plants are, we're not during any kind of peak traffic time, so it's a good time for it to be able to flow as well. So our safety concern there is that simply, and I might add, that the building that is adjacent here is also our cancer center. So a lot of the maneuverability, the people coming in the main area, it's already in a less-than-ideal environment, because they're coming there for a reason. We're trying to make this as simple as possible, and we can literally not impede the flow of that traffic to be able to get to the drop-off area here or to interact with the public if we're able to do that. Now, the second thing is the pre-cast hanging. So your pours are all done, your building is done. Each one of these circles that are here are where cranes will be set up, and they will work on each side of the building, lifting these very heavy pre-cast panels. Just to give you an idea, if, when it's located right here, here's the access to the hospital, here's the ambulance, when it sets up there, half of that parking deck is going to have to be shut down. Also, there is a tunnel, you may or may not be aware of, that it is open for both patients, doctors, that comes from the parking deck all the way over the hospital. That will have to be shut down as well. The reason being for that is because we were told that if one of those panels drop, it will go through the parking deck and through the tunnel. It will literally just slice right down through it. So when it's set up on this time, it's this side, that's going to be shut down, half of this, and the parking that is right here. If it's set on this side, all of that's going to be shut down. You can see how it just moves around the building. So our request there is for us to continue working through the day until one AM from mid-December through March first, just that limited time. Now, these are weather-sensitive, so if you're in a thunderstorm, it might be pushed off a day, but we believe we've captured it within those months that I've just described to you. And if it is all possible to consider a vote this evening, our goal is to be able to pour, start pouring on November first. In your ordinance, we have identified, well, in your ordinance, it requires anyone within five-hundred feet of the construction site must be notified. So we've pulled all those names, and we have twenty-three property owners, and I did it on a conservative nature, it wasn't just write five-hundred on the nose, but we will be notifying them upon your approval, and we have to do it two weeks before we actually start. So the next hearing would be on the eighteenth, so we would miss our November first. So if there's a way to do it tonight, I would respectfully request that, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? You say there's twenty-three homeowners?
Twenty-three, yes, sir.
Within five-hundred feet?
Within five-hundred feet, yes, sir. And that is from the outer perimeter to the outer perimeter.
Ms. McGrew?
Have you approached any of the homeowners yet?
No, ma'am, we haven't heard one thing from anyone.
Have you gone out in the evening to check the noise from this kind of activity?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we did it during, actually, a higher propensity of construction, and that's when the hospital was being built, when we were doing pours in concrete and steel at all the same time. And we had people out there, like I said, at four AM in the morning. And I might add, I'm sorry to say this, also, the very last page of the pack that I gave to you is actually a letter that each one of them will actually send out, and it's got the Batson Cook manager's phone number on it and contacts, so if anybody's got any question, it'll go straight to the contractor. But we do not anticipate anything like what occurred there before because of that banging.
If we agree to this, Mayor, and then we get residents complaining about the noise, do we have the authority to close it down and stop the activity?
I wouldn't think so if we agreed to this, unless there was some sort of conditional agreement that could be made, but I guess that's a city attorney.
Hold on. I don't know why you couldn't revoke it if it's not turning out the way that you thought it would turn out.
You could do it now?
I don't know why you couldn't revoke it. It's not a deal, so if it's not turning out the way that you thought.
I would assume, maybe, and maybe wrongfully so, that your contract with them may be based in the amount of cost and so forth, may be based on them being allowed to do it at this time, or is it not a financial consideration at all?
I can actually tell you that financial consideration had nothing to do with it.
Okay.
It's the twelve-to-eighteen-hundred people interaction with twenty-three trucks during a pour during the busiest time of the day. This is all about safety, and the pre-cast, really, it would be extremely difficult, and as I was advised, dangerous to do it otherwise.
Mr. Goodman?
I wanted to make the motion, but I also wanted to check and see, could we include that if we had someone complain, that they would have to be contacted and taken care of that matter? Bobby?
Sure.
Well, I'd like to make the motion.
I really have a formal process for you to do.
And what I might add, I'm sorry, I don't want to be out of turn.
Go ahead.
We'll go ahead so that we can give you assurance. On that first pour, we will have the same people at four AM out there on the street, and we will record what we hear. We will monitor this, so that if something comes in, we will have firsthand knowledge.
Will you have the people contacted before then? The neighbors? You will have, you will have contacted all of them before?
Other than the hospital, we've not been contacted by any?
Can I say, before we started the pour, will you have letters out to them?
No. Well, other than the notification by the letter, there won't be any, we won't call them and let them know that we're doing, is that what you're referring to? I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm talking about the notification of the pour.
Oh, oh. The date, these dates are in that letter, letting them know when it's coming.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
I'd like to make that motion, and we give consideration for you all to go ahead and start early.
Okay. Repeat your motion, if you don't mind.
I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and vote on this tonight, to give you the ability to go ahead and start that project as you were requesting at this time.
Okay, without any other conditions on it?
Well, again, I am, the condition would be that if we have noise complaints, that we have that project stopped at that time until the people are, you know, available or they're agreeable to that.
May I?
Sure.
Probably the best way to do this, to make sure what noise people are talking about, is that we will monitor, we will monitor and record what takes place during those pours of the pre-cast, so that something that happens during the day that someone might hear will not get confused with what's happening outside of the hours. I think we need to self-police ourselves so we can produce evidence to you in case someone calls.
Okay. We have a motion.
I just want to make clear that you need to start this right away, so it will be fixed up during the time.
This is based upon a November first pour, yes, ma'am.
Not really a crisis, but it's something that you need to get started right away.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hasty seconded Mr. Goodman's motion. Okay. Now, Mr. Grant?
I certainly understand the request and the need in safety. I appreciate that, and that makes sense to me, and I don't have any issues with that. What I do have issues, again, is, you know, here we go again, is we have an agenda item on a working session, and there's no possible action mentioned on the agenda item for the public that might be affected by this issue to be aware of previously. And then, I understand and appreciate the letter that would be sent to them, but the letter would be sent to them saying, you know, this has already been decided, and this is going to be happening. So there's no advance notice, and there's no opportunity for them to voice any concerns before it happens. So, again, I don't have any issue with their quest or why they're asking for it, but I just have issues with our process, you know, again, in lieu of recent activity, where we're talking about being transparent and giving people opportunity to, you know, voice their concerns of any issues. So just wanted to state that for the record.
Ms. McGrew?
You haven't turned my line off yet.
Oh, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second, and, Mr. Grant, I understand your concerns there, too, and I share those to an extent, because it seems like our ordinance may, in the future, need to be adjusted somewhat, because it does seem like maybe the people ought to know it's coming and have an opportunity to complain before they come back and say, you already approved this, and we didn't know anything about it, other than just, I mean, it's approved after the, they're notified after the fact, and that just seems a little bit backward, actually. Probably somehow in the future, we need to work to make sure people are aware of it, and they can welcome to express their concerns to the body here that's going to be making the decision as to whether to grant that or not. So at any rate, you have something?
I would just say that, I don't think they can send a letter until after we voted, because they wouldn't know they could start the project if we said, no, you can't do it during those times. You know, if we said, no, you cannot, you can't, you can't do this work during these hours, then they wouldn't be able to go ahead with their project, and they wouldn't be, there would be no need to send a letter.
But they could send a letter notifying them that they are requesting that of the city and giving them an opportunity to attend a meeting at which a decision would be made. They could do that.
Right. This is a variance and not an ordinance, right? So we don't have to have a second reading on the variance.
Policies of discussing things twice, but you're not into the second reading, yeah? Right.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say if I'm saying aye. Pose no? Okay. All mirrors voting for the motion with the exception of Mr. Grant voting no. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Mr. Hosfeld. Next item, discussion of the agreement between Chattahoochee Technical College and the Canton Police Department to provide law enforcement services upon request for emergency or special circumstances. Chief, you going to handle that, chief?
I received this, well, good evening, Mayor Council. I received this probably, I would say, a month ago from the chief of the Chattahoochee Technical College. As you know, one of the campuses is in our city on Bluffs Parkway. Upon looking at it, it's basically a formal request. This is something that we already do with Chat Tech, the Chattahoochee Tech Police, but this is just something in writing that formalizes that, my take on after reviewing it, so that's my review of that.
Right. I understand, basically, it'd be, is it mutual? In other words, you could call them, and they'd come somewhere else in the city? Or is it just if they called us, you go there?
They, we could, let's say we had an incident, I don't know, just for some of the businesses on the Bluffs, and we need extra law enforcement assistance under, through this and through the state's mutual aid agreement, we could, that would be covered, yes, sir, cover both agencies.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that? Comments? Pretty much, pretty much something we would do anyway, I would think.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion of the planning commission recommendation for KCMP eighteen-oh-eight, dash zero-zero-one, C-four-sixty-three, Fund- oh eight dash zero zero one, C four sixty-three Fund LLC requesting to amend the Riverstone Master Plan for Pod One to increase residential density from six units per acre to sixteen units per acre. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. Canton Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on September seventeenth in regards to this master plan amendment for a portion of Pod I at Riverstone. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the amendment for the master plan relative to the increase of the density for residential from six units, and actually, the, they approved the request fourteen point three eight units to the acre. They also recommended two conditions be attached to the master plan amendment. The first of those is the applicant would contribute seventy-five thousand dollars towards signalization at point in time that it is warranted for Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive, and secondly, provide median breaks along Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive as approved by a city engineer.
Mr. Patton, on the, on the condition that I said, the applicant's price, seventy-five thousand toward the cost of signal, signalizing Reinhardt College and Reservoir Drive, but the second one, the applicant shall provide median breaks along Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive. That wasn't exactly the, the recommendation, was it?
They recommended looking at providing median breaks and curb cuts into the site in two locations, one along Reservoir Drive and one along Reinhardt College Parkway.
But, but if, if this is signed like this, and they find out through DOT that they can't get that curb cut, then there's no zoning, right? I mean, it says specifically, they shall provide median breaks. It doesn't say they shall provide them if the DOT approves it.
If GDOT does not approve the median break on Reinhardt College Parkway, then they would have to come back to amend that condition, have it deleted.
Okay. Okay, any, hold on a minute. Go ahead.
I have a question about the traffic signals. The city cannot, we can request traffic signals, but that is also something that DOT must approve, correct?
At that intersection, yes.
Yeah, that intersection.
It will have to be approved by GDOT.
Right, so even though we requested a traffic signal there, there's no guarantee that it would come from DOT?
Not until DOT warrants that the traffic signal is needed.
Right.
But with this condition, at least, the city would have applicant participate in the city's portion of funding of that signal at the point in time that GDOT were to warrant and approve signalization.
Right, it's up to GDOT. Okay. Ms. McGrew?
Is it within council's right to ask the development to make some changes to amenities, such as basketball courts, landscaping, and to have a requirement, and this may require an ordinance change, for, to offset blight, to be able to find, find a complex for not keeping up their property?
A council can certainly propose conditions relative to amenity improvements to be provided as a part of the approval for this development. If a council is inclined, they can add a condition that would require the applicant to participate in some manner of council's discretion in regards to elimination of blight and/or provision of funding to attack blight or provide affordable housing.
Will this development have its own swimming pool?
It's my understanding that they would, yes.
Tell me about the traffic study. When was that done?
It was done in the summer.
Had school been let out yet?
Yes.
School had been let out. Did the developer contact the school board and discuss this project with them?
Yes, they did.
And what was the outcome?
The board requested, if I'm not mistaken, a hundred and ninety-four dollars per residential unit contribution to the Board of Education to cover additional costs for the board to provide services for students that would live within this proposed project.
Did the school board not address overcrowding at Teasley and Cherokee High School, which are already at capacity?
They did not specifically have any language relative to capacity in regards to the letter that was received and is, in the package of information in which they requested the hundred and ninety-four dollars per unit.
I haven't gotten any communication from the school board that they're having a problem with the development, and with two schools, the middle school and the high school being at capacity, I would have thought they would contact us with some concerns.
All that they provided was the letter in which they requested the contribution of a hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Okay, thank you, and the traffic study was done in June, and school had been let out? Is that what you said?
I know it was done in the summer, I'm not sure if it's done in June, but it was done while school was out.
I am very troubled by this, the impact on traffic. I'm going to request a traffic study be done while school is in session. I'm not comfortable at all with a traffic study being done in that area when school is out of session. And that's all I have right now.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if.
Mr. Grant?
Sorry about that.
Hold on a minute, hold on.
There we go.
Take your time, I'm slow.
On the, so the traffic study was done, it was June, I read in the report, but did the traffic study take into consideration the other apartment project that was, or previously approved in the same year?
They did take into account that previously approved apartment complex in discussions and presentation at the planning commission meeting. The representative of the firm that did the traffic impact study addressed that all of their projections within the study, that they did a thirty percent increase on projected traffic volumes as a part of their study to account for additional development and things of that nature.
Also, I know we are just embarking on a one forty corridor traffic study, and, and my question was, is sort of how these traffic study relates since they're in the same, same area, and I know we're doing the one forty because we didn't necessarily trust the other traffic studies being done by developers, and it didn't really commute to us, and it was also done in the summer when school was not in session, so I just wonder, you know, again, how this would relate.
This subject property and the intersection in question of Reservoir Drive and Reinhardt College Parkway are outside the corridor of the State Route one forty study that's been commissioned?
But I believe, I thought that that study also include the, the roads that fed into one forty?
It does address Reinhardt College Parkway and the intersection of State Route one forty, but the study area as defined was a quarter mile either side of State Route one forty, and that corridor study line is just short of the intersection of Reservoir Drive and Reinhardt College Parkway.
So just short of, how short?
I'm not sure the exact dimensions, it's a few hundred yards or so.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Who did the traffic study, do we know?
Think it was SEI, possibly.
The developer?
The developer play, contracted with a third-party firm from here in Metro Atlanta to conduct the traffic study.
So, when, do we know when we're going to get the results of the traffic study we have contracted with the county to, will that be within the next couple of weeks? So, if, if, as Ms. McGrew has suggested, that we have a traffic study, you know, I don't think we need to, to hold this out a long time, would that be something that could be accomplished, say, by the first meeting in November for a vote?
That would depend upon workload of a firm that we're contracted to, if you will, update the existing traffic study to account for school times. Like I said, I'm not sure what workload is. Last I'd heard turnaround times on the traffic studies was running about six weeks.
Okay, that, that puts it, what, six weeks would be? For November?
It'd be, middle of November at least.
Yeah. Yeah, middle of November.
The attorney representing the clients is here, he might have a better idea of whether they could get that updated traffic study to council prior to the next meeting in two weeks.
Croy Engineering is the engineering firm that did the traffic study for us, and we'll be glad to update that study and also coordinate with your expert and engineer in what their studies are showing. We'll also be pulling our own data, traffic count, so we can share that with them, so it may save them some time and money, and I don't know that I can commit to the two weeks. It's already started, so.
This gentleman is with Croy, who did the traffic study.
Mayor, Mayor Council, my name's Daniel B. Dobree, Jr., with the firm of Croy Engineering, and we did, in fact, do the traffic study where the data was collected in June when school was out, and as Mr. Patton correctly stated, in our staff conversations with school staff, we, every location where we took account, which was the signalized intersection at one forty and Reinhardt College Parkway, and Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive, and Reinhardt College Parkway and Riverstone Boulevard, to account for school being out and new traffic, all those counts were increased by thirty percent. That, they felt that was a good conservative amount. And also, with regards to the discussion with Georgia DOT and the traffic signal, yesterday, we collected twelve-hour turning movement counts specifically for, to address that question about, is the signal warranted today, and have some input into projecting when it might meet the warrants. With regards to updating the entire study, we would have to update the counts at the intersections at one forty and Riverstone Boulevard, and that typically takes about a week to do that, and then about another week for us to do the analysis. So if we started, well, we couldn't count tomorrow because typically Mondays and Fridays are not good days for traffic counts, so if we had them next week, we wouldn't have the data until the following week, but the third, at the latest fourth week in October, we would have an updated study. Yes, ma'am, we would, we would produce another one of these documents.
Interesting dichotomy here, if you need a traffic light, it means there's lots of traffic, and the reason, and the reason I bring this up is that I'm hearing from people over there about how horrible the traffic is, and I went myself to just check it out, and it really is bad, so I think that's something that, that we're going to be taking into consideration, because the traffic is really horrible.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and, and the original development of regional impact for the entire Riverstone development anticipated that, but as you were correct, the Georgia Department of Transportation, who makes the decision, would want hard numbers to define, and we could be at that point, the data that we collected yesterday, will, we would know next week, have a really good idea about the, the traffic signal, but for the full-blown study, like I said, it would be before the first meeting in November, realistically.
What year was the DRI done, Kent, do you know?
Two thousand and six, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Two thousand and six or two thousand and seven.
Okay, Ms. McGrew, do you have something?
I do. Is there a breakout of how many students are projected to be inhabiting this complex?
I would have to look at the information the Board of Education provided, because they generally will indicate the number of students, and I don't have that with me.
Okay, I appreciate that, and while you're getting those numbers, Mr. Patton, could you also please get the numbers projected of students at the other complex, whose name escapes me?
The Grand Reserve.
Thank you, the Grand Reserve. If I could have the numbers for those two complexes, the projected number of students, and a breakout of, be they high school, middle, or elementary school. Also, the zoning for that corner pod, will there be anything else on that corner besides an apartment complex? It's zoned commercial, multi-use right now?
Are you talking about where the apartments are proposed to go?
Right, Pod I.
Well, Pod I does have additional acreage besides the twenty-plus or minus acres of the apartment complex that will have office, retail, and residential. All of that will be to the east and northeast of this proposed site for the apartments.
Okay, just for clarification, we heard about this development because they have to come forward for a change in master plan and also, excuse me, conditional use permit. If a developer had come through with just the other side, the commercial, would council have been made aware of this, and would we be voting on anything?
Council did hear amendment to, to the master plan property on the other side of Reservoir Drive about a year and a half, two years ago.
Right, but Pod I, had they wanted to just put in all commercial, would we be talking about that now?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grant?
Again, just confirmation, the traffic study was conducted June twenty-seventh of eighteen, and it did involve the three intersections, including the one on one forty and Reinhardt College Parkway, so it did include the Grand Reserves or the one on Reservoir Road. Since we are looking at the one forty and Reservoir, and Reinhardt College Parkway intersection also, did the traffic study also include the new apartment complex off of one forty, close to Soleil, Lower Canyon?
That, I'm not sure.
No, sir, not specifically, but what we did on top of the original thirty percent increase to account for development that was being constructed at the time and school traffic, the opening date for the, excuse me, the parcel that is under consideration tonight, we grew that traffic another one point five percent per year to account for ongoing development in the city and in proximity, but as for identifying a specific development, no, sir, we did not.
Okay, because I know the one forty study, I think that was a big influence around that study, and one of the big concerns we had was the, the backup, again, that's the intersection further down. Um, again, that's the, uh, the intersection further down. Um, and our concerns were that a lot of people would be taking that left turn there on, onto Reinhardt College Parkway, so I would have, also have concerns there that, that that complex would impact and add a significant amount of traffic to that of just the people avoiding going straight in the backup that is happening down there. Again, that's, I think that's where the 140, uh, traffic study is gonna, you know, um, instruct us on some of those issues as well.
Mr. Estes?
Yes, I, so we've heard a lot of feedback, um, from, from citizens, and, and a lot of the feedback has been around infrastructure, which if I think about that, I think it, in two ways. One is traffic infrastructure and ability to support that. I think we've beaten that one to death, so I'm not gonna ask about that. But on the other side is infrastructure from the standpoint of just, um, pipes and water and sewer, and, and so I gotta imagine as part of the, the master plan, all the plumbing and, and that kind of infrastructure would be there, correct?
They will have to, uh, install on their site and tie into the existing system, and part of the master planning did look at everything that was approved, uh, within the overall Riverstone master plan, uh, which, uh, at, uh, that time, uh, included about four million square feet of retail office and about a thousand residential units.
And so going back to what we talked about earlier with the, the sewer and the wastewater treatment plant, that would, we're kinda guessing what the, the needs would be from that standpoint to, to support the future projections of when stuff could come online within that existing master plan, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Peppers?
Just to, just to comment on that, Mr. Estes, um, one of the things that, that we consider on that is that, that Riverstone area, uh, from a sewer capacity dumps into what we call the old Ball Ground Sewer Project that we just did a few years ago, where we expanded that portion of sewer to be thirty inches in that area. Um, eventually it flows into what was being described earlier by Black and Beach as that, that project along the Etowah that flows into the Coalwell Lift Station, which is that next upgrade, thirty to thirty inches. So, it, we have some capacity in the line as it relates to Old Ball Ground. This is the type of project that's going to encourage us to grow that other section of thirty-inch pipe as it goes down to the, to the Coalwell Lift Station.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Pepper, is that an engineering already underway with, uh, that additional upgrade, uh, from where the last one stopped to the Coalwell Station?
Ms. McGrew?
Will the developer be asking for a reduction in tap fees to our sewer?
No.
He answers what?
No.
No.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, the next item basically is the, um, conditional use associated with the, uh, proposed development there, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, as Kent Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on September 7th in regards to the conditional use permit application. There was a companion with, uh, the master plan amendment case that we just discussed. Kent Planning Commission did recommend, uh, approval of conditional use, uh, permit to allow the three-hundred-unit apartment complex, uh, with the same two conditions, uh, as was included with the master plan, uh, contribution of seventy-five thousand dollars towards, uh, signalization at the intersection and, uh, providing median breaks Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive.
Okay. Any questions there? Okay. Okay, hold on a minute.
Did any commission say that the city would contribute seventy-five thousand dollars toward traffic?
No, no, I don't think so. They said that the developer would have to contribute seventy-five thousand.
Not the city?
Not the city, no. Anyone else? Okay. Next item, discussion of the public hearing process for planning and zoning cases. Ms. McGrew?
For some time, I've been-
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry? Got me? For some time, I've been disappointed in the planning and zoning public hearing opportunities. Not everyone sees the yellow signs on the road, not everyone reads the newspapers, and news travels via the grapevine, social media, phone calls between neighbors. So I've been thinking it over and wondering if council could approve, talk about adding additional public hearings. My goal would be to have a public hearing, excuse me, before the Planning and Zoning Committee, um, their meeting, their normal, uh, meeting that has public hearing, and also have public hearing at our work session and our meeting. And the reason I would like to have the public hearing before our work session and our voting meeting is because when our, our residents come and talk at the public hearing, they speak before the builder, the developer presents, and before we have our conversation. So that, they would be bringing their, their thoughts, their perspectives, their emotions about a project. But then, at our voting meeting, our residents would have heard more information, they would have more data to be able to voice their, their opinions and their perspectives. So I think they would be very well-informed at that point. And I've talked with Mr. Patton via email, who is our community develop direct, Development Director, about the legality and the appropriateness of more than one public hearing, and he assures me that it is not unusual to have more than one public hearing for planning and zoning. Legal ads must be placed in the newspaper, which I'm guilty of not seeing them, uh, and the dates for the multiple hearings would be included in that ad with just a slight increase in the ad for another line. And Mr. Patton, do you have a, a cost, or is it just not, very nominal?
If you're talking about, uh, having public hearing at both of the city council meetings, uh, I would have to, uh, talk with the Tribune in regards to, uh, the one additional public hearing. The increase is nominal, somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five dollar range, uh, and I would tend to think that, uh, just adding, you know, another date shouldn't affect that price increase that much.
I think that even if the price goes up slightly, it would be worth it to allow our community to have more voice and to be heard. Were you gonna jump in?
Just a thought occurred to me, you may not be able to pull it off in one ad because of the forty-five days. If you're advertising in one ad for both the Pub, Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council Meeting, that might not work timing-wise, so you may end up having to do separate ad.
And, uh, you know, uh, I have to count, uh, looking at the work session meeting for City Council for public hearing, uh, which is the first Thursday, and Planning Commission Public Hearing is the third Thursday. Uh, the ads that we run for the Planning Commission, the work session would comply with the not, uh, more than forty-five days. I did not count, uh, the third Thursday meeting, so it possibly would require two advertisements.
Mr. Patton tells me that we would need to amend our development code to put in language for the extra public hearings. I think that's something we can do for sure. It's been his experience that occasionally people will skip the planning and zoning public hearing and wait to speak until they get in front of the elected officials, although he assures me that that's not totally bad. I would be very disappointed if people didn't come to the planning and zoning so that they could hear the project being presented, presented the first time and gather as much information as they can so that they have a well-informed, um, origin of thought. We would need to change the attractive yellow public notice signs, and Mr. Patton is in agreement that more input is, is good. I believe it's good to hear from as many residents as possible, and also for the developers to hear what our residents want. We need to offer more opportunities to our public for input, and I would like to see a public hearing before our work session and our voting meeting, both, because the pub, um, public hearing comes before development, and it would give them more opportunity to get more facts, 'cause as we go from two weeks at planning and zoning, then two weeks to our work session, and two weeks, that's about six weeks, we do gather a lot of information during that time. So that is what I would like for us to consider.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Estes?
May I address Ms. McGrew? I have a question for, just for clarification. Play it out, so for tonight, it would have, the, the three-hundred apartment, uh, unit apartment would have gone through, planning and zoning would have had public input, and then, in this case, approved it. Then when it comes before the council, it's, the recommendation is that then there would be public input for that. We discuss based on all that feedback, and then again, at that meeting, so it still has to go through, to your point, all the, the dialogue. This is just enabling the, the, the code to allow us to have multiple public hearings and, and meetings, correct?
Correct.
And hear more feedback, okay?
One thing that, uh, sort of concerned me, uh, at, at the Planning Commission meeting is, uh, it is a very limited amount of time, although I, they, I'm assuming can extend that time when they want to, but it is pretty limited, you know, ten minutes total on each side, you know, I mean, that's, that's not much time. Uh, another thought is that, that might help, and whether or not you'd even need to change ordinance to do so would be to, uh, allow, and I'd have to ask our city attorney, whether we could do that, is to allow, uh, discussion at our public input period on those zoning matters, if they wanted to come in, you know, uh, 'cause it would be on our agenda for discussion, and, uh, that would be advertised, and of course, if they came in, they could allow it, we, we could allow that, you know, 'cause normally what we do, if there's been a public hearing, then we don't allow input because we haven't, uh, you know, you would have to give both sides equal time, and that could be done certainly, as long as they knew ahead of time that that was gonna be the case. But, I mean, that's another option there, I think, to, uh, expand the, um, public input into the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Ms. Wilson, hold on a minute.
Um, I just, I, I agree. I really would like for us to have another public hearing. It's, uh, sometimes we can't all go to the planning and zoning, and perhaps it's more for us than it, as much for us it is, as it is for the citizens, but would you have any heartburn over just one more public hearing? I think maybe three is almost overkill, overkill, so I would prefer to have one at planning and zoning, and then one before the council.
I wouldn't call it, may I address, may I address, Ms. Wilson?
You may now.
Thank you. I wouldn't call it heartburn. I would be disappointed, because I feel like the information that the public would gather at our work session, when we are talking to the developers, and like tonight, when we're talking to Mr. Patton, I think that information would be valuable, and then, um, they could ruminate over that information, and then come back at our voting meeting with more informed opinions. However, I mean, one more public hearing is better than none, but I would be disappointed. Can't hear you.
By email and phone. Had a public hearing like we have now before planning and zoning, and then we had another public hearing before us during the work session, then they would hear it, they would be able to present, and then if they had any questions, they could ask us individually or as a group, by email and telephone. So, so, you know, I'm okay with, with three, but I'd, I'd prefer only two.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, could you address the issue of the public talking to Planning and Zoning Board being inappropriate? I've been to two planning and zoning classes, and they have, uh, mentioned that it's inappropriate for PNC Board members to, um, talk to the public, so can you elaborate on that?
It's specifically written into our Unified Development Code, uh, that the Planning Commission members cannot have, in legal terms, ex parte communications on a matter before the Planning Commission. They can't really speak with anyone, uh, for or against, uh, prior to that public hearing. City Council can have, uh, ex parte discussion, uh, but the Planning Commission, by our local ordinances, is not allowed to, uh, have those conversations. If I might could address one thing, Mr. Mayor, uh, in regards to your thought about possibly opening up, uh, public input. Zoning procedures are pretty specific in, uh, regards to, uh, if you open it up for one, you have to open it up for the other, and you do have to follow, uh, legal requirements for advertising, uh, relative to the date, place, time of the meeting, uh, and you do have to allow both sides to speak.
Well, I, I wouldn't have a problem allowing both sides to speak, but I, I, I wouldn't have thought that during public input, you necessarily have to advertise that, you know? I mean, if you, you know, if you're equal to everybody, but I don't know. Um, Mr. Dyer, you, uh, you have something?
I, I do. The, if we're gonna make it a public hearing, one aspect of the public hearing is it's creating a record, so that if it goes on to court, you know what, and that's, the Planning Commission is where we create the record, and that's one reason why we say no public input at this meeting, because we haven't given everybody notice to come. But if we give everybody notice and say, "Come, have a public hearing," it's another public hearing. And, and I think just saying, "Come, and you can talk," at public comment, I mean, that's just a public hearing. You would, you'd be inviting them to come talk, it's still, if you're saying this is the time the public can come, that becomes part of the record. And it, this ex parte idea with the Planning Commission, I mean, I, I don't know if, uh, there's any law out there about elected officials being able to do that. I mean, you still have the same problem of there's a record, and if you're hearing information outside the record, but, um, we would have to think through that. I mean, there's nothing, there's no reason, we can do it all, we can make it work, it's just we'd have to think through some of this, the particulars.
Mr. Peppers?
We'll do whatever city council wants in regards to the number of, uh, public hearings, how we advertise, sign it, whatever.
One of, I'm sorry.
Just one other thing. Uh, a resident mentioned to me that the placement of the signs are horizontal or parallel with the roads, and they're hard to read. Is there a rule that says that the signs cannot be placed perpendicular to the roads so that they're easier to read?
No.
Okay, great, thanks. I'm done.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Grant, did you have something a few minutes ago? Sorry.
Yeah, I don't wanna give anyone heartburn or disappointing heartburn, but, uh, I, I'm all for as much public input as possible, hence my earlier statements, uh, this evening. However, I do wonder also if, if three's overkill, not for, for the fact of having too much public input, but just the fact that how our work session and our voting meeting is supposed to work, and that we gather the information, discuss all the information in the work session, and I can see how the public hearing could, could inform us further on that, and we bring the, the public into that, and then, you know, supposedly and theoretically, we have the information, uh, to, to vote and have a little bit more efficient, uh, meetings on our voting meetings. Granted, we don't always follow that process or those rules, uh, and that changes, but, but I do think, one, and I do, I would have some concern if there were three public hearings that maybe they would choose to choo, you know, only attend one out of three, you know, two, maybe they can kind of both, but I wonder, you know, if we had had a public hearing tonight, we got a lot of emails, if, if more people would have attended the, the council meeting tonight, which I think would be great, the emails are fine too, but, um, I would love to hear, heard from more people tonight on this issue, um, but I just, those are my comments, but, um, I, I, all in favor for a public hearing at the work session.
Mr. Peppers? It was on a minute ago. There you go.
I was just gonna note-
I was just going to note that from a cost perspective, cost for legal ads, cost for signs, those are all expenses that are borne by the applicant. And so if it is something that we need to do, we'll have to look at our, our fee schedule as it relates to that, but those additional costs would be borne by the applicant.
I tend to, tend to feel that, you know, if, if something were coming in my neighborhood that I had concern about, I would certainly go to the Planning Commission meeting. It would not take me very long to decide whether I was for that or against it. And, and, you know, I think most people are worried about what's coming, and not, not as many, most of the people that are going to be there probably are not going to be there just to support it. They're going to be there against it, it's not going to take them very long. So I, I think that if it were me, and I found out very quickly, I suppose, the next thing, I'd be in front of the council. They're the ones that's going to make the final decision. And I think, and I'm not sure they would go to, I, I wouldn't need to go to three of them. I could go to one, find out what it is, and then I would probably go before the council and, and raise that after sending about four or five emails to everybody, you know? So, anyway, that's just me. Anything else on that?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just so the mayor and council, where we are in the process of doing an upgrade to some of the software that the city uses associated with our permitting and licensing, and a part of that upgrade is going to allow us to start posting applications and things that are coming before the Planning Commission. Once we receive them, then we'll be able to get that into the system. The public will have access to look at also, similar to what Cherokee County has.
Very good.
Hopefully that'll be online sometime in January.
Okay, Mr. Grant?
One, one final comment in support, and it sounds like we're, we're all in favor of the adding a public hearing to council, is I do think it would help the Planning Commission and the council work closer together, and it, it doesn't put all the, all the, I guess, burden on the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, just to hear those cases. And I know we make final decisions, but I think that would allow us to work closer together. I don't know if it's possible at, at the hearing for council to actually hear from the commission, or a spokesperson from the commission is part of that hearing, but anyway, I think if we can work closer with the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think that's, that's even better, so.
Well, as you know, probably know, quite a few years ago, and, and Ms. Wilson will remember this as well, is that the, the council was required to be at the planning committee, meeting. If there wasn't a, a quorum of the council members there, they couldn't hold a public hearing at all. I mean, I don't know if that, you remember that? In fact, I remember one night that there wasn't a quorum. I don't know if you were here at that time, Ken, but it wasn't a quorum, and just had to, right, everybody went home, couldn't hold a public hearing, had to re-advertise and everything, so.
Yes, sir, that was in 2008.
Yeah, that's early on, yeah.
In my first year with the city.
Yeah, mine, too. Okay. Yep.
Are we gonna, is this going to be for a vote next time, or how are we going to make the decision?
Actually, you know, it, it would seem to me that it would be good for, just have a council committee look at it and, and make, make a recommendation as to the best way to go about doing this, you know? Ms. McGrew, would you, you would serve on that, wouldn't you?
Yes.
Okay. Since he's not here, I'm going to put Mr. Yon on there, and Ms. Wilson, how about that? The, serve on the committee to look at this and see what's the best process to improve the public input opportunity. In Paris. We'll let him know later. And, so y'all can work out a convenient time to get together. I see it, just hang on. Okay.
Thank you. I see that we have four members of the P&amp;Z in our audience, and the chair of the P&amp;Z is here. Mr. Kemp, do you have anything you'd like to add? Briefly? Are you at all, you and your board, are you at all opposed to what I'm suggesting? Not at this point now. I, I Thank you so much for your service. Would it be appropriate to have a member of the P&amp;Z on this committee?
I don't know why not, I mean.
We'd have to go through the zoning process, so, because you're amending the zoning ordinance. So it could run through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you could get their input that way.
Yeah, that may, maybe what we ought to do is have the committee meet and, and then present that to the Planning Commission for their additional comments. We could do that, and any public, and a public hearing.
You'd have to have a public hearing for that, right?
Yeah, we could do that, would that work?
Fine.
Okay.
Thank you so much for considering this.
Okay. All right. The next, next item on the agenda here, discussion of the Cherokee County request to amend the Fire Services Consolidation Agreement related to Bluffs property. And I think there has been a little misunderstanding about what that totally involves, but Mr. Pepper's going to explain it.
Good evening. It came to our attention through a story that ran in the Tribune, that the school district and the Board of Commissioners were considering an agreement to swap some land. And so, as I understood it from Mr. Cooper at the county, the goal was to take the four and a half acres that the city owned adjacent to the property that we traded to the school district where they built their administrative building. We gave that to the county as part of the fire consolidation agreement for them to utilize for a future fire station. The school board wanted access to that four and a half acres, and the county at the time said that they felt like they could build the fire station on their property, which is across the street, that is adjacent to the Board of Commissioners building up the Bluffs. As part of that conversation, the fire chief, Chief Prather, mentioned that the school district had some land in this area of 372, 369, that the county was in need of an additional fire station in the future. And so basically, what came about from that discussion was that the school board was willing to give the land out near 372 and 369 in exchange for this four and a half acres at the Bluffs. I did let Mr. Cooper know, however, that our Fire Services Consolidation Agreement does not allow them to just give away the land. There is a process that they have to work through the city with that. And so I told Mr. Cooper that I felt like the most direct way to handle this would be for the Board of Commissioners to request an amendment to our agreement, which would allow them to be able to basically trade that property, with the understanding that there would be a fire station in the Bluffs area. And that I would be happy to present that to council. I'm not making any recommendations, that's ultimately your decision. But that's what you have before you, is a little bit of background from their standpoint, and what they are trading for. I do believe it is the interest of the, of the Board of Commissioners to build a fire station site near their existing county administrative building at the Bluffs, so basically, it would be across the street from where our potential site was located. I do not know, however, what the goal of the Board of Education is with that four and a half acres, and so that's kind of a looming question that's out there.
Mr. Peppers, I, I believe the agreement says, when we consolidated, that there would be a fire station there within three years, or the property would revert back to the city. If I read that correctly and attached my hair.
I don't have it on
It wasn't just a reversion, I believe it said three years.
I believe that was for the property at Laurel Canyon.
Oh, is that one, okay. So that's, that's part of this thing?
There were, so there were four, there were four properties that were involved in the fire station consolidation. The first one is the South Canton Station. We gave that property through deed to the county. The only reversionary clause on that one was that if they ever sold the property, the city would have first right of refusal on that parcel. The second was the downtown fire station. The city retained ownership of that location and agreed to lease that to the county at a dollar a year for them to operate as a fire station. The third was the Laurel Canyon property, and in that property, what we did is we agreed to pay a set of funds towards the project, I believe it was 1.25 million for the construction of that station. The property at the Bluffs, the only requirement in there was that if the county was not going to use that property for a fire station, that it would come back to the city as part of a, as part of a reversion clause, because we actually purchased that fire station land with splotched funds that were set aside for fire.
Mr. Pepper, tell me if this is, if I'm, I'm reading now this resolution that they've prepared for the county and the city to sign, if, if we reach in some sort of concurrence here. It says, "Whereas the agreement contained a clause for the vacant parcel that required the county to construct a fire station on the vacant parcel within three years, or the vacant parcel would revert back to the city." Is that, are they not talking about the parcel that we're talking about? Sure looked like it.
Yeah, I think they are, but I don't recall that exact language in the fire consolidation agreement.
At least they think that, right?
Pardon?
At least they think that, apparently.
If I recall the exact language, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize. It just basically said that that land was purchased for a fire station, and if there wasn't going to be a fire station there, the city would get that property back. And I think what Mr. Cooper was thinking is that, you know, our goal was to have a fire station in that area. The, the concern that I have is more financial concern in that that property was purchased by the city specifically for recreation, and then when the city did the trade of land with the school district, we kept a portion for fire and reimbursed our recreation funds and utilized fire splotched funds for that particular parcel. And so, you know, the question I would have is, is the land that the county already owns, where they plan to build a fire station, an equitable use of city resources in an exchange for land out in unincorporated Cherokee County? That I don't know.
Yeah, I, I can almost assure you that the value of that lakefront property of an equal amount on the other side of the highway, is, there's a big difference in the value there, be my, be my guess.
I mean, the, I would just say, the bottom line from my standpoint is that we want our fire department to be the best that it can be. And so Chief Prather told me that he had this need on this property out in the county, and I don't disagree with his need. I just think the city should have been party to the conversation before they had reached some potential agreement with another group, and I just don't know that they were knowledgeable about that particular area of the contract.
Mr. Grant?
The IGA was very clear, very black and white. It simply stated if the land was not used for a fire station, it would revert back to the city. I don't think there was anything else in there, I read it a couple of times again today. And I know one of the things that we wanted that clause in there when we were negotiating the IGA was that it would make a great park possibly, being on the lake, if it wasn't used for a fire station, and also since it was paid for, that property was paid for with city funds. And again, we do want our fire station to be the best, and it is the best, given their, their latest ISO, but again, I don't want to be selfish, but I think it's valuable property. I think we negotiated that in good faith, and in my personal opinion, we, we should hang on to it and do something with it for our citizens, or, or sell it if someone wants to buy it, and, you know, we could use that money to go into our sewer improvements or something, so.
The actual language of the agreement says, "Transfer of ownership of the vacant land earmarked for a city fire station located in the Bluffs to Cherokee County. This transfer of ownership to the county shall include a reversion clause that provides for the property to revert to the ownership of the city if the county does not utilize the property to build a fire station."
So there's no time limit on it? So they could keep it forever, as long as they can never build a fire station on it?
That's correct.
Well, I think they think something else, based on what I'm reading in this thing, though. We need to let them think that.
Sure. We'll ask, we'll ask Margaret to
It's our, it's our advantage. Certainly our advantage. Let's see. Maybe we could work out where they would build a fire station, even on the other property, within so many, within a period of time. But, no, I tend to agree with Mr. Grant there. Ms. Wilson?
I just wanted to ask, if you purchased the property with splotched funds, the fire, the fire part of splotched funds, are you not obligated to do, to do something with, about fire? I mean, if it reverted back to the city, would we not be required to do something about a fire station there if it was purchased with those splotched funds? Or could we sell it for a park? I mean, I don't know, I don't know the
I believe our auditors would look at it and say, you know, if, if the county were to get rid of that property, and they were to build a fire station across the street, that ultimately, it did create fire services. It's not as restrictive for us as, say, an impact fee would be. And we would also have to have residents challenge us on it, which would, you know? Right. And so our agreement, when we did the consolidation, was to provide the splotched resources that we had purchased in the past to them, so in this instance, there's just that reversion clause.
Fire station just across the street from this property, or is that just in their plan?
They've told us they would. I think that, you know, my concern is that there's not enough concrete details in our document to be able to really get our, get our hands on what, what the timing is, what the goal of the school district is on that property. I mean, it, it may be that there's a better use for the city than the school district out there, and so, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for us there, I don't know.
Is there a, a time constraints or something on this that they need an answer quickly, or anything like that regarding their
They haven't given me any time constraints, no.
Okay, okay.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I appreciate the county thinking about future fire services. What are they doing about the replacement of Station 9?
Apparently they're working out the details with GDOT on exactly where the curb cut is located on that station.
Still in the area that was previously mentioned?
Correct. It'll still be in the same location, but there's some concerns about the speed as it tops that hill, and where they can actually
Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
Follow-up on Mrs. Wilson's comment. Again, that property was purchased with city splotched funds, our allocations. The county is now looking at possibly trading that to the school board for a property to build a fire station in the county that would serve as county residents and not city, so I see that as a disqualifier, because it's, it's, it's not serving the city. They, they're planning on possibly building one across the street, which is fine, but that deal or that transaction doesn't seem correct to me, so.
I think the way they view it is they're trading, they, they are requesting that the city allow them to build a fire station on their property, because it's closer to their other administrative buildings, they have property there already, I don't know if it's a better side or what have they, I don't even know if they've gone through statistics, and that in exchange for putting a city station on their county site, we're giving them the land, the four and a half acres that's on the reservoir, and they can then make that trade with the school district land. I think that's how they view it. We're still getting our fire station, we're still getting it in the same area, they're just doing a little horse trading on where it's going to be located.
Anyone else? So we'll move on to the next meeting, I guess, with this discussion.
Sure. I'll see if I can get some more concrete answers from both the school district and the
Okay.
Board of, Board of Commissioners before then.
Sounds good. All right. The next item, discussion of the request for extension for submission of the service delivery strategy to the Georgia DCA.
Yes, sir. The city managers met with the county manager. We Um, we are due to turn in our service delivery agreement, um, at the end of October. Um, there's still some outstanding discussion items, uh, related to the agreement, and the consensus of the staff was to request that the elected bodies, um, provide, uh, authority to the mayors, uh, and the county commissioner to sign an extension with Department of Community Affairs that would allow us to go into next year as we work through some of those issues. Um, typically, the Department of Community Affairs doesn't have a problem with that. They just want all the parties to agree that's the process that's going to be followed. And so what you have before you are the documents that'll have to be, um, signed by the City of Canton as one of those, uh, parties to this agreement.
And we could do that in the next meeting.
That is correct.
Approve that at the next meeting.
That's correct.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Okay, uh...
Mr. Peppers?
I wanted to first start out and talk about garbage tonight. Who wants to talk about trash? I would, I would like to say that, uh, I, I think all of us were a little bit, uh, a, a little bit knowing that there would be some hiccups as it related to the conversion of garbage from waste management to advanced disposal. Um, as it relates to the garbage part of that process, um, I believe we ran the numbers with Advanced and, uh, out of some 9,000 accounts, we had less than 200 where we had issues, uh, still remaining with garbage containers. There were a couple of delays in there, uh, and so we regretted that. The biggest issue that we've had in the process has been recycling. Uh, and I want to give you a little bit of background on that. Up until 2009, the city had charged for recycling. That was an agreement that the city had with a vendor, and so if you had an account for garbage and you wanted to recycle, you paid a fee for a tote, or later on, you paid a fee for a rolling container. Um, after 2009, that became a free service under the, under the, uh, franchise agreement with the vendor, and basically, the vendor had no need to keep records from that point because every city resident was given the opportunity to collect for free. Um, and so some of the records that we have related to recycling were old, imported at best. Advanced disposal, when bidding on, uh, the franchise with the city for residential garbage, was provided the best accurate data that the city had, and we now know that that data wasn't as good as we hoped it would be. Um, the good news is that a lot more of our residents recycle. Um, the bad news is that in ordering the 65-gallon rolling carts, we greatly underordered those and are working right now with Advanced disposal on new orders of those carts. What we have done in the interim is we have, uh, secured, uh, a large amount of totes and are working to get the 18-gallon totes out to our residents, uh, based upon request, keeping a list of those residents that would like the 65-gallon carts, and after those carts are produced and, and brought into the city, we'll distribute those, uh, if they're available. Um, we have received some concerns from residents as it relates to, uh, cost of service. I've heard from lots of people that, you know, we'd rather just stick with waste management because it was cheaper. Well, the, the bottom line was the waste management contract had ended, uh, and their proposal would have been $5 more than our current vendor's contract, and so, uh, keeping a low rate wasn't a possibility. Uh, there was either going to be a change in vendor, or there was going to be a, a huge price increase to stick with waste management. Um, as it relates to backdoor service, uh, Advanced disposal will continue to provide backdoor pickup service for residents that currently have backdoor pickup service with the city. Um, those are our older residents, our residents with a disability. One thing that we have been required by our auditors to do is to have some type of formal process to be able to know who is receiving that service, and so what we are implementing is an annual affidavit that basically allows the person seeking backdoor service to sign up for that service. Um, we have found out through our own internal audits that we have backdoor service existing at locations. And it was just never changed, and so we're trying to get our records as good as we can, uh, in the future as well. Uh, we have had the Ridge Road facility open for some extended hours this week and last week as we've gone through the conversion. Uh, we have, um, seen recycling pickup at that location, uh, during this time. One added feature that we've got in there now is single-stream glass recycling. We now have container out there. Residents can bring their glass recycling direct to the Ridge Road facility. Uh, in just the past two weeks, uh, if you've called into the Utilities Department, you've probably got a message that you're the X number of caller in the queue, uh, and that is because that, uh, department has had lots of phone calls. Um, and unfortunately, just because you called one day and told us you needed recycling and we told you that we're putting you on the list, doesn't mean that the cart is available the next day. Uh, and so we're getting repeat calls, and we're trying to deal with that as best we can, but of course, our utility staff is working to give as many answers as they can. Our finance staff has been working on garbage. Marion, our receptionist, has been working on garbage. The city clerk has had messages about garbage. I've dealt with garbage, and I know each of you have as well. Uh, we've put our Public Works team in action to deliver totes and cans as best they can to assist in the process, and we believe that we should have almost every customer on the recycling list served with a can or a tote, uh, if we are out of cans within the next few days. Uh, for those individuals who have not called in or have not emailed us about recycling, we may or may not know that you're a recycling customer, and so it's important that they reach out to us, give us their name, give us their address. We can make sure they're on the appropriate list so they can be serviced. We still have some remaining waste management containers that are in the area. Uh, I believe Waste Management has concluded their route through the area, and so Advanced Disposal or Public Works will try to pick up some of those carts. If you have a cart and you want to keep it, keep it, you know, um, there's, there's not an issue with that either. The last thing I would note is that, uh, we're also working with some concerns that are not city residents. Uh, we have found that we basically have about, uh, five or 600 customers that Advanced Disposal will be serving that are city residents that weren't accounted for on the waste man- Um, Waste Management also went through and pulled containers for non-city residents that might fall in our geographic area, and so we've been dealing with a little bit of that as well. Um, but we are working as best we can to, uh, to get this fixed, and our hope is that within the next couple of weeks, it'll be just a traditional garbage pickup day for, for many of our residents, including recycling. I have been asked, and, and Mr. Grant had noted this earlier in the meeting, there is a copy of, uh, set of minutes, uh, at your seat. Those minutes are from May 17th of this year. Um, I received a visit earlier this week from the site superintendent at Academy at Main. One of the items that our engineering department has been holding up the project on is the poured sidewalk from the exit entrance into their development off of Hill Street Circle, uh, down to West Main Street. So if you're thinking about the west side of the project, um, there is supposed to be a sidewalk poured, uh, along the curb line at Hill Street Circle. It is the belief of the developer that when this item was discussed as part of the streetscape project, that the council had provided a waiver for them to complete the sidewalk until they reached the second phase of their project, which would be construction on the backside of Hill Street Circle. The minutes, if you read those under "I," uh, talk about the developer's concern about pouring the sidewalk prior to the street being wi- being widened and paved. Um, I contend that the streets are already paved and there, i- it's already been widened, the curb is in place, there's really no reason for the sidewalk not to be in place. But I did let the developer know I would be happy to ask council if it's their desire for the sidewalk to go ahead and be poured, or if it in, was in fact your wishes that they should not pour that sidewalk until they start a second phase of the project. Um, there, they believe there's a discrepancy between the minutes and the video. I don't see the same discrepancy, but...
Have you actu- have you looked at that video?
Yes.
Yeah?
And, and, and I think that the minutes are a little bit clearer on, on what the basis of the conversation was. It was that we were not going to require that the developer put the sidewalk in before they finished the work on that. And the work on that street was to widen the street, pave the street, put in curb and cutter. That's done. There's really no issue in my mind that would keep them from going ahead and pouring that section of sidewalk, other than perhaps cost or their, their desire to hold off on it for a later date.
So now what, what exactly, when did they think that they should do the sidewalk?
They think that it should be done along with Phase Two, which is the backside of Hill Street Circle and any construction that they do in that area. If you'll recall, the initial concept, uh, that they brought before council was to put some type of residential or mixed use at the backside of that property, eventually abandon a portion of Hill Street Circle that runs through the back section of that property. I believe it's their mindset that they not have to do any sidewalk work until that part of the project is done.
Any thoughts there? Mr. Grant?
The, the minutes, um, state that he requested the city wait, but then it, he, he requested that city wait on Hill Street Circle, and it says, "Mr. Harris has agreed to pour the curb and sidewalk." And then, uh, it also says, "Mayor pro tempore, Grant asked if the developer would be covering the cost for the streetscape on Hill Street." Mr. Peppers responded, yes. So, I mean, according to the, the minutes state clearly that he's agreed to pour the curb and sidewalk. It was just a request, uh, say, pour the sidewalk.
That's what it looks like. To me, anyone else?
I'm happy to let him know that the minutes...
I mean, it's got to be done one ti- sometime anyway.
Correct.
You might as well go and do it.
We will let him know. Uh, the Jones Building, the fencing around the Jones Building was scaled back. Um, if you are in the parking area between the park and the Jones Building, that whole area is open now. Uh, we've pulled back some of the fencing on Main Street as it relates to the project. They're currently working with contractors on the punch list of the project, and the storefront's going in, uh, along Main Street, and we should have a canopy in place by, uh, later on this month. The last item I have for tonight, um, is about the restaurant district cups. Uh, just so you know, the ordinance sta- states that cups will be approved by the city manager. I did, uh, sit down with, uh, the police chief to kind of talk about the cups and what, you know, what we thought the cup might need to have on it. The ordinance specifically says date and time. Um, tomorrow, because this is the first weekend where the restaurant district would be in place, tomorrow, a memo will be sent out to the, uh, establishments that have pouring licenses, uh, in that district, uh, that provides that a 16-ounce clear cup, uh, can be used as long as it contains the following information. It will have the name of the pouring establishment, and that can be abbreviated, so DK for Downtown Kitchen is fine, they don't have to write out the whole name of the restaurant. Uh, it should have the initials of the server. It should have the date and the time of the pouring, and then it will either include the letter B for beer, W for wine, or L for liquor. Um, and that was the information that, that we basically spelled out have on the cup. We, we viewed it almost like a Starbucks cup. You know, you go to Starbucks and they write everything on the back of it. It would be similar. I do know that, um, there had been a discussion from the Main Street Board about the possibility of that group purchasing cups. Uh, I've expressed to them that that's fine, if they want to spend their money on that. Whatever they get printed on the cup should have places for that same information. And then also, the hope, um, is that, you know, we can put some language in there that by, at least by the end of the calendar year, that the cups could be biodegradable in some stance, uh, as part of that process.
How is, how is that going to work with First Friday exactly? Because you can, you could buy a, a beer there or, or a drink, uh, in just any kind of plastic cup, actually, during that time, but you wouldn't be able to walk outside that particular event district with that cup, right?
So First Friday, um, has the ability for, uh, walk-around consumption within the area of the event. We altered the event area last year so that individuals could walk down to, I believe it was Mama Onesta's that was just outside the event boundary. We altered the boundary to include the sidewalk in front of the stores in that area. So basically, all of the restaurants were included, uh, in the area of the event. Yeah, I assume if you walk outside of that area, you would need that information on your cup.
Or someone, uh, no one could take any from, let's see, yeah, there, there's no restaurants out there. So if you went in a restaurant, uh, after six o'clock and, and wanted to walk out the restaurant with it...
You could do so.
You could, you can't bring alcohol into the event space, can you? Or can you? Can you bring it from the outside?
You're not supposed to. You should purchase from interior. But of course, you know, people may bring in a container, and we, we don't know what's necessarily in it. We don't check every container that walks in off the street. You know, it could be a water bottle, it could be, you know, an Aquafina bottle that has something in it, you know? But as it relates to the event, you'll be able to walk around in the event without having any of that on the cup because it's part of a special event.
Would it make sense to expand the restaurant district to, to include, uh, I'm sorry, the event district to include the restaurant district?
I think it would. This is the last First Friday, and so I think that's kind of the one situation that we're in, is that this is the last First Friday of the year. I do expect that First Fridays moving forward will probably be that entire district to match so that it's easier for the, for the resident and consumer. And that's all I have.
Mr. Estes?
Real quick, Mr. Peppers, the, uh, regarding the Jones Building. So I noticed I parked the other day to get coffee at East Main Cafe, and one of the spots that's closest is now, when I got out, there was like the wheelchair handicap accessible access to the sidewalk. Is that, so cars really shouldn't be parking there anymore, right?
It, it's not a, it's not a ADA accessible space. Um, we have these in other areas of town where you have, um, an entrance to a location that comes down a hill, where we do have a ramp in place. It's more of a service space. You know, if you were going into the business and you were pulling something in, you won't break the curb, so to speak.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the only thing that, basically, that I have is, um, actually twofold, actually, uh, the, uh, I'll be nominating at the next meeting, uh, Bob Riley to continue, uh, his service on the Canton Building Authority. Uh, Mr. Peppers, do you know when the Canton Building Authority met last? Which year it was? Been a while, had, had it, okay. But there's still debt hanging out in there, right? Canton Building Authority still has debt?
Uh, yes, yes, they do.
Okay. Otherwise, we wouldn't really need them at all, I think, anyway. Okay. So I will be, uh, nominating Bob Riley to continue. He's been on that for some time. Also, I think that we have, uh, everyone knows that we are losing our city clerk, which is a tragedy as far as I'm concerned, and she's done such a great job and everything, but she'll be with us to, toward the end of this month, I think. But, um, uh, Mr. Peppers is in the process of advertising and getting some, um, applications in, and I'd, I'd like to think that, uh, that I appoint a committee, uh, composed of Mr. Grant, if he would serve on that, and, uh, Ms. Wilson, and we'll put Ferris back on that one too, for, for the, uh, to help sort out the applications, to review them and then come back with, uh, you know, some recommendation shortlist or something, uh, so that hopefully we won't be too long without a, uh, uh, a city clerk. And I believe, uh, uh, there's some more things in the work that might, uh, uh, allow her to, to help us in a little bit, a little bit longer anyway, but ho- hopefully that can happen. But anyway, um, that's all that I have, and I'll entertain a motion, uh, to go into executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and real estate. Uh, Mr. Goodman?
Slow move.
Wait a minute now, you can't do it that quiet, quick. Now say second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, seeing five, saying aye.
Aye.
No, we will not be coming back out for any, uh, votes.